Twenty four, welcome to the Borough Council Work Session Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order, and if you would all stand, and we will say the pledge of allegiance. Item three, common suggestions, petitions by residents and attendants regarding items that are not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none. Uh, item number four, approve the EEOC mediated settlement agreement. Uh, this is a confidential labor employee negotiated agreement, um, that, uh, we have reviewed in executive session. Are there any comments by council, questions? I can make motion to, uh, move this to, but yeah, public, uh, public comment? Okay, uh, we'll move this to the consent agenda. Item number five, motion to appoint conflict counsel and direct them to attend and take a position at the June twenty six, twenty twenty four conditional use hearing in West Goshen Township regarding temporary housing expansion of student homes.
Good evening. Uh, Brian Nagel here on behalf of the Westchester University, uh, states of state system of higher education, uh, Pennsylvania. On this agenda item, we wanted to make sure council really knew what was going on. We had had an earlier meeting, so I just want to run through a few points, and I have uh, Jeff Osgood from the university and Chief Stevenson from the university here with me this evening. We're just concerned that Borough Council has a misapprehension about the purpose of the hundred and twenty eight temporary beds that the university is planning to put in M one lot along Matlack Street in West Goshen Township. The hundred and twenty eight temporary beds, which we are seeking approval for a five-year window for those, are enabled the university to pull students out of existing residence halls that need renovation, uh, over that, that five-year period. So that those existing facilities can be renovated, uh, to be reused with newer facilities for the students. I did issue a letter to Mr. Metric today to notify him that the university has taken sixty beds offline in the College Arms building. So that's the, the beginning of that process of taking some of the beds offline to renovate. And I put some details in the letter about that. Um, Jeff Osgood I mentioned is here with me this evening. He's going to, in a few minutes, share um, some information about enrollment at the university and projections, so the council can understand that, uh, as part of this explanation for this project. But the temporary housing, let me be clear, in West Goshen, hundred and twenty eight beds, is not an enrollment growth plan for the university. It's part of the university's plan to ren- renovate existing housing. I also want to note, uh, the borough is aware, a few years ago, West Goshen Township and Westchester Borough both adopted new ordinances for the planned university district within each municipality. You and Cole is working on a master plan for the university, so we should be getting response from them. And that has to do with the future planning, uh, at the university, and we'll be sharing that information with the university, with the borough and the township. And the master plan approval in both the borough and the township will require conditional use approval for the master plan in each municipality. West Goshen has been very supportive about this project. They understand our need to renovate the existing housing stock within the borough. And when we started the process with West, West Goshen, I want council to know that it was very important to the township and the university to make sure that the borough knew what was happening here. So we met with Mr. Metric and at the time, um, Councilman Stefano. We went over the details of this project with them. They gave us some feedback about it. We changed the project to address borough concerns in terms of the flow of pedestrian traffic to try to keep the students going to the high street corridor, especially at night. Um, we also instituted a shuttle so that, um, a new shuttle that'll operate, um, Thursday through Saturday, um, and late at night until two thirty in the morning, so that, so that students both here and elsewhere on campus can take the shuttle from town rather than, than having to walk, uh, on their own to go, to go home at night. With that background, at this time, I'd like Jeff to ask Jeff Osgood to come up and just give you some information about enrollment.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Jeff Osgood. I serve as the Executive Vice President, Provost at the university. So I'm responsible for enrollment management, um, and the university's, uh, and serve as the university's chief operating officer. So one thing I'd like to talk about enrollment, the last time that we were at our height, our peak enrollment was in two thousand twenty one, when we had seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy six students overall. Of that, fourteen thousand seven hundred and twelve students were undergraduate students, which are the, uh, the student population, I think, is, uh, most impacted by, um, the housing considerations that are, um, being discussed this evening. Um, I want to let you know that we just got back from the state system of higher education where we presented the numbers that I'm going to present to you tonight. So these are part of our five-year plan that we're required to submit to the Board of Governors for approval. That checks our financial sustainability and our overall, um, operating conditions. Right now, we don't expect to get back to fourteen thousand seven hundred and twelve undergraduate students until at least the twenty five, twenty six year, and that would be predicated on improved retention and graduation rates, and it would also necessitate additional, um, on-campus housing. I think what's also important, in addition to the Board of Governors, which oversees the ten university system of education, each institution has a, a council of trustees. Our council of trustees has indicated a strong preference that we keep our undergraduate enrollment to about where it is right now and, and to, to not exceed the fourteen thousand seven hundred and twelve students that we experienced in two thousand and twenty one. Um, we, um, there are two things that the, the council of trustees has asked us to focus on. It's increased graduate enrollment. Um, at our height, we had over three thousand graduate students. We have less than that currently. And also, um, since, um, the state system of a higher education underwent its transformation from fourteen universities across the Commonwealth to ten, uh, they have now started to permit other universities to engage in online undergraduate learning. So if there was additional growth there, we've been given permission to start to explore offering online undergraduate education, what was not available to us. Um, I think it's important to note that we have long wait lists for students to live on campus. We want them to live on campus. It's more affordable. It's a safer proposition for them. There's lots of research that indicates that, um, their ability to be retained and graduate is increased when they actually live on campus versus an off-campus housing. So we want them. We have over eight hundred students on the waitlist for the university's own housing. And then, of course, you know, we have our partnership with our foundation, and they similarly have a, a long waitlist as well. Um, and so that's something that we hope that the additional housing that we're seeking to, to, uh, to build on campus. As our counselor has told you, uh, we are seeking to build additional beds on campus. We've heard from multiple successive, uh, Borough Councils that you wish us to do that and seek approval to do so within the super block. And right now, the best and most suitable place that we have would be, um, um, where the currently Lawrence is, where, uh, which is where our old dining facility was. Um, and is now, um, uh, housing a few administrative offices, but that's where we're seeking to, uh, to, to build additional beds. Uh, that's why there's a five-year window we're seeking from West Goshen for the, for, um, for the hundred and twenty eight beds, in addition to the sixty beds that have come offline in College Arms. There's essentially, once we were able to find out, or find a solution for, uh, backfilling those beds. Uh, if you look at Tyson and Goshen, which are on Sharpless, uh, Street, which you can, um, you can easily identify that they're older buildings. They remind you of a, a standard nineteen sixties construction, um, project. Um, there's about a hundred beds on each floor, and we do need to, uh, to, to renovate those. Um, we, we expect that this is going to be our, our max enrollment on undergraduate, about, about fourteen thousand seven hundred students. We want to increase the number of students who live on campus. Um, and I'm happy to answer any, any other questions, um, you might have.
Uh, you mentioned the sixty beds at College Arms. Where are the other beds coming from that are amounting to the hundred and twenty? I'm trying to, trying to figure out how all this adds up.
Yeah, so they did. So right now, so the additional sixty beds would be, hopefully, we would, those students, instead of seeking off-campus housing, um, in the perimeter of the borough, would be able to live on campus. But it also gives us flex space to start to take some of the beds off, offline in, in the, and Schmidt Hall, which is at the corner, uh, what it's new in, um, Rosedale? New and Rosedale, Tyson Negoshen, which on our Sharpless, and some of our other existing housing stock. So it's really just to create the additional space to start engaging in those renovations.
I, I have a question. Um, my understanding is that in building these temporary homes,
Yes.
a hundred and twenty real parking spots will be, will go away. What, where are they gonna go? I mean, where are these a hundred and twenty cars that need parking are gonna go?
Excuse me, Jeff.
Sure.
While, as Mr. Nagel's looking up stuff, the, um, a couple of questions I have.
Yes, sir.
Uh, can you submit to the, to us, uh, uh, at the borough, a list of buildings that you're actually going to renovate? So this way, here we know that, um, if you're going to do Tyson, and you're going to do Schmidt, and you're going to do Wayne.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, you're just not go, going to redo, you know, Commonwealth. Commonwealth's not one of your buildings, but
Correct.
Tyson or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I want to see a beginning point and an endpoint, uh, because it's a five-year plan. And Mr. Nagel's very good at asking for extensions, uh, because, uh, he's good at, he's just good at that. So what, what happens is, if we have a list of exactly what buildings you're going to do, we will know we have a beginning and an end of this project.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to, uh, to, to provide that document as soon as we're done. I just want to correct something. It's, it's more than a five-year plan. The five-year plan is related to the approval of the modular housing. I wish we had the financial ability to renovate all of our facilities within a five-year, uh, time horizon, but we don't. And, and when you're dealing with about, when you're dealing with over twenty-four hundred, oh, university-owned beds, we just, we wouldn't be able to do the flex. So it's going to be more like a ten-year plan. Those, these comprehensive master plans usually take that long. Um, and so as soon as we're, we're done developing them, but we understand that the ten years won't be related to the modular. The, uh, West Goshen has given us some very direct, um, feedback about how, what their time horizon is in terms of their, their level of comfort.
Thank you, because I'm used to Mr. Nagal asking for extensions too, and, and he does it with such grace. The, uh, the other, how many beds do you really have on campus, foundation and, and, uh, traditional? Do you know?
Like five thousand three hundred and thirty-five, right around. What? Five thousand four hundred and twenty-five is obviously a hundred, sorry.
Of, of traditional and, and foundation?
Yeah, university-owned.
Okay, but a list of, uh, of the buildings that you're planning on renovating, I think would be helpful for us, so we know there's a beginning and an end, just like West Goshen.
This will be a comprehensive plan for all of our buildings, not only, not only housing, but the, the entirety of the campus that we'll be submitting to you as part of a master planning process.
Yeah, we might not see you again. That's why I'm, I'm asking Mr. Nagal to make sure that we receive it.
I've been here seventeen years. I'll be here for the duration of the plan.
I won't be.
Okay, so.
I'll be at St. Agnes Cemetery, but thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. I, I just want clarification. So the, the renovations are occurring in, in which building initially?
So we don't have the, the exact sequencing right now, because you and Cole is giving that, but we know that we have to do that for Tyson, Goshen, and Schmidt at a bare minimum. And College Arms has some, um, issues that we are going to take the beds offline, and we are, we don't have a, a concrete plan for those quite yet, but we did, um, communicate with the, with the borough manager that, um.
So I, I think I heard you say that Tyson and Schmidt have a hundred beds on each floor, or a hundred rooms on each floor approximately.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're creating a hundred and twenty beds of temporary housing? Where are, you know, though, each of those dorms are, I don't know, five or six floors?
Six.
Right?
Right.
So where are the other five or six hundred students gonna go?
Well, we, we would have to do them one floor at a time to accomplish the entirety of the renovation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why, that's why I would, I wasn't, I was just saying that, that I wish we had the ability, both financially and space-wise, to achieve a renovation of this scope in five years, but it's just not possible.
Okay. And then I had the same question. Mr. Nagal wants to come up with where that parking's gonna go?
I mean, and we'll also be happy to, I mean, we turned it, it's called, it's called the CPP documents, the Comprehensive, um, Planning Process Document that the chancellor had instituted when he came in about five years ago, which he since you university uses to, to plan out its financial sustainability. We, we balance our budget on, on these undergraduate enrollment numbers that never exceed our fall twenty twenty-one, um, level, which is the, the highest that the borough has ever experienced. And so we're happy to provide you that document. It's a public document. There's, there's no reason for you not to have it, and as soon as we are, um, done, not, and so, uh, Mr. Flynn, not in, not only will we provide the comprehensive master plan with you, we also are, um, have worked with another organization in tandem with you and Cole called Watchdog, which is a financial services firm that will help us plan out the, the necessary bonding issuance that is required to support a project of this scope. And so, um, there, there's only one thing that really constrains you in these things. It's space and, and financial resources. So the financial plan will let you know very specifically how much debt we can take on, at what level, and when we're going to retire, acquire those bonds and retire those bonds. So it'll, it'll definitely be a very specific, um, timeline for those renovations and the addition of a new, uh, residential facility.
So, oh.
Mr. Carl?
Did you?
Do you have questions?
When it comes to the renovations of those dorms, are you going to be adding more beds?
No.
Or they're just gonna be, they're just, so they're just gonna be renovated?
So I will, uh, Mr. McGinnis, I will tell you that, oh, actually, one of the recommendations we've received from you and Cole, that would be in the document that you get once it's fully completed, is that they're recommending actually that we reduce the number of triples that are in some of those rooms, even though they're permitted to be triples, where they're, they're recommending that we actually de-densify those, those. So we, we actually are planning for, in our discussions right now, it would be a net reduction in the total beds in each of those.
What about building on South Campus? Has that been talked about or discussed?
Yet, but we, we have not, we have not received positive feedback in our discussions with the, the, um, impacted municipalities. So uh, we're, we're still working with, well, again, I understand that councils change, so I'm, I'm just reiterating. My experience here is that we've been told by successive councils that to build in the super block was acceptable, so that's why we focused our, our attention there.
Is there any more plans to add any new dorms, or is it just renovations?
No, we do need to add an additional facility, which we're likely to put at the existing Lawrence building right now, which is at, uh, which borders New Street.
Mr. McGinnis, do you mind if I just make a comment?
Go for it.
Wait, when, Mr.
You want to talk in the microphone for the people at home?
Thank you.
You don't, you don't leave, because I, I need you to, to answer this, Jeff. Just to make sure I have this right, when, when Mr. Flynn was asking you about the five-year window, your, the university's plan is, is to try to get the new residence hall up in that window, so that at that point in time, you have additional space, and then you wouldn't need the temporary housing anymore. Is that what you were trying to say?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry for, for not being clear on that. The, the need for us is to first build the, the additional capacity in beds, which is at the Lawrence, um, the current site of the Lawrence Building. Um, so it will give us the flex to, to not only, uh, bring more students off-campus, um, into the super block, but also to accommodate the Tyson and Goshen, Schmidt, and other, other renovations.
Are these public funds you're using to renovate these buildings and building the new buildings?
So under state system guidelines, you have to, these, uh, residential halls have to be auxiliary. They have to be self-supporting, so they're actually funds that we would be charging the students, um, through their, uh, semestrally rental fees. They're treated as public funds once they reach the university, but, uh, but there's, uh, at this point, we, we receive so far, so few public funds. Um, I think less than twenty-eight percent of our budget now is, is taxpayer-funded.
And, and I guess the other question is going to be about the parking. I mean, that's going to be huge. That's right up Mr. Caro's alley. So, I mean.
Yeah, good address. So before I ask Chief Stevenson to come up, let, let me address your question, Mr. Schmone. The, the, um, there's a hun, there's two hundred and three spaces in M Lot, M One Lot. And of those, sixty-eight will remain while the temporary housing, they'll all remain. The temporary housing will be placed over the parking lot, and then they'll be restored when the temporary housing is removed. A hundred and thirty-five spaces are removed, sixty-eight stay while the temporary housing is there. We've done counts, and we have between M Lot, M One Lot, the other auxiliary parking facility there that's along that strip lot along Matlack Street, um, and the garage. We have a hundred and seventy-six open spaces. So we've got more, far more than the hundred and thirty-five we're removing. Plus, on the approval for the School of Music Land Development, when the School of Music and that parking garage there were built, West Goshen required the university to put a reserve parking, um, lot on the plan in the field where the band practices. And they did that so that if there was ever a parking problem in the M Lot area, where the parking garage is, where M One Lot, where M Lot is right there by the School of Music, and kind of on the back end of the EO Bull Center, the township could require the university to install those additional parking spaces. I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but it's somewhere around a hundred and fifty spaces. So even that reserve parking area alone is more, I believe, than what we're taking offline. In addition to the hundred and seventy-six spaces, we've done counts. And we have a hundred and seventy-six spaces without the reserve parking right now that are available. So we don't, we don't, we don't anticipate any parking.
So, so wait a minute, you're adding a hundred and fifty additional, because you're taking away a hundred and thirty. You're gonna add a hundred and fifty?
No.
Or you're saying there happens to be a hundred and fifty out there? Because my understanding in the southeast quadrant is that parking's at a premium, and it's tight, and people have problems, and we're gonna lose parking with the Wyeth Building, and people are gonna need spaces. So to go into a, a deficit is still, I, I'm concerned.
Yeah, understood. It's, it's, there may be parking issues in some areas. There's not parking issues on that part of the university. There, there's a hundred and seventy-six open and available parking spaces based on actual counts that the university did, and the university's parking consultant did an independent review of that and confirmed those numbers. So we're, we're, we're very comfortable that we're taking a hundred and thirty-five offline. We have a hundred and seventy-six extra, so we're not going into a deficit. And then, there's no plan, I just want to be clear, there's no plan to build the reserve parking that's on the West Goshen, on the SOMPAC plan, but they're there in the event that there was a parking problem, and the, and the township could require us to build that lot, if they wanted to.
Do, do you need a permit to park in that lot? Like, the, those lots over there, that you do?
There's a general permit, yep.
So there, there could be an opportunity to make it easier for people to park there, and maybe that would open it up. If, if they're not being used, it might be because it's too hard to get that permit? Just a thought.
Well, why don't, I think that's something that the chief could answer. So let's, we'll allow him to speak to the, the, West Goshen reviewed the, the plan from a, a fire safety and health safety perspective. The fire chief reviewed it and signed off on it. But I also wanted to have Chief Stevenson explain some of that to you as well.
Hello, everyone. Um, Chief Ray Stevenson, I've been chief of our department for the last four years. Uh, prior to that, I was lieutenant since nineteen ninety-six. An answer to your question, uh, Matlack Street Garage, there's at least twenty percent vacancies in there. That's the garage adjacent to M One. And then we have additional parking down on South Campus, which is Q and R Lot and Lower Lot. The problem that the students experience is not finding available spaces, but they want convenience. And there's empty spaces, and you can pay as you go at the garages as well, for nine dollars a day, a dollar fifty an hour. So there is additional spaces there.
How much do you pay in the hundred and thirty-some-odd spaces that are going to be lost with this building?
Thirty dollars academic year for the surface lots.
Versus nine dollars a day?
Mm-hmm.
So is the parking garage, that Matlack parking garage, going to decrease its cost to thirty dollars, uh, academic school year in order to encourage the students that will lose their parking?
The thirty dollars.
Into the garage?
The thirty dollars.
As opposed to into the streets of Westchester Borough?
Sorry. The thirty dollars surface, uh, permits have not increased since two thousand and one. That's a fixed cost, because we want our students to park on the surface lots. Ideally, we would like them to park down South Campus where they could warehouse their cars and take the shuttle buses that runs from seven AM to two-thirty in the morning. So.
That, that, that in the garage is a pay-per-day, that's a surface?
No, that's, yeah, it's a free, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Oh, okay. No, no, so that one right there, that surface lot is just a free open lot? In the garage too, on Matlack Street. If they want to park in the super block, like B Lot, the lot's interior is thirty dollars a day. Thirty, thirty dollars a academic semester, sorry.
I'm with you.
I have a question. Um, who's permitted to park in that lot where these, um, temporary? Like, what is the usage for that? Is it for primarily commuters? Or, I believe, uh, um, you know, employees can park there, but I don't think it's, people living off-campus can park in that lot, correct?
Correct. So the designated employee lots are in the center of campus, which we consider L Lot by sites, and also B Lot, which is behind the twenty-five university and Mitchell Hall. The majority of our parking areas, surface lots, are dedicated to commuters. The resident students have dedicated parking down South Campus, because we find that they warehouse their cars there. So that's why we try to give greater flexibility to the North Campus lots for commuters and faculty staff. And even down South Campus, we have faculty staff designated lots.
Can I ask some questions? Are gonna be kind of all of you. Sorry. We are, you are not going to build on South Campus. You're focusing the building on the super block, correct?
So I, I cannot stand there and tell you we will never build on South Campus, but right now, the feedback we've gotten from the, the adjacent municipalities is that's not something that they're interested in. And again, like I said, we, we believe that the super block is the best place to focus our efforts at this point.
I am one hundred percent supportive of the university housing its students. I want you to build. I want people living on campus. I think that's a wonderful thing. I've lived in Westchester a long time, and I've seen a lot of hiccups about that, and to me, any movement towards housing more people is good. But we need to do it in a very balanced and cohesive way, where we're going to think about the cars. We have been working with the Parking Committee to allow students who are living off-campus to get permits in a very organized and methodical way, but there are limitations. If, if West Goshen is not building more housing and the borough is allowing more housing, I would like the university to take some of the burden of housing the off-campus students' vehicles that are clogging up especially the southwest, the southeast, the southeast quadrant of the borough. It's, it's a, an ongoing problem for the neighbors who are, are residents there, and it really needs to be addressed in a sort of compassionate way. So if you are allowing the students who are truly off-campus to commute in, what are we doing to the students who are living just off-campus? Asking them to either not get parking or, like, the, does the university not provide any parking if you're just living slightly off-campus?
Well, I think it depends. If you're living just slightly off-campus, it depends on your class standings, yeah, but I mean, if you want to speak to it, we can, but it, we, we do not want our first and second-year students bringing in their cars on campus, and then once you've, you've exceeded that, then you can get a commuter, uh, permit, just like everybody else. We've, we, we invest significant funds, because there's still a lot of empty parking spots, uh, down on South Campus at Farrell Stadium. We run, um, shuttles, uh, very frequently, um, and we do that so students can find that convenient, even our employees do. I think another, um, a point that has not been made yet, that since the pandemic, we've increased significantly the proportion of our, our employees who actually work from home either entirely. So if they're not student-facing, they do that. Um, or if they are student-facing, they're not working a full five days a week for those, those positions that can tolerate that kind of service delivery and still, um, provide, uh, the, the expecta, or meet our students' expectations. So we even have reduction in employees who are coming into the borough and parking, um, at the university. And so we're continuously looking at our, the, the mix of our housing stock to, to engage in that compassionate piece. To be quite honest, I think we're probably one of the most compassionate. When you look at universities, for us to have, you know, you have students paying less than a hundred dollars, uh, a year for parking is incredible, when you look at other universities who pay four, five, six, seven, a thousand dollars. So I, I totally hear what you're saying, and, and, and part of the planning process is for us to get that feedback. I, I know the Vice President Davenport held, um, an open meeting to collect that, uh, to collect feedback on our master plan, but that's definitely something that we can take, um, into the planning process, because that's something that ultimately we have to turn over to you as part of the, the original overlay, so.
I, I, I think it's a, a really, the burden on the southeast quadrant, for whatever many mistakes were made, um, is way too heavy, and we, the residents who live there, who are not students, need to be seen, heard, respected significantly more than they are now. I, I, I can't really speak to all the mistakes that were made, but this needs to change.
Yeah, and I would tell you that the goal is to, we, we want, as, I mean, s- some individuals in the borough who, who, um, experience a financial benefit from students living in their housing stock will not like to hear this, but we want as many students not living in their facilities. We want them on campus. I mean, and so, and, and we would want, and planning for their parking is part of that.
Yeah, and I, my only ask is, in the sort of time being when they're still Yeah, and I, my only ask is in the sort of time being when they're still living there. If you can take some of those students and really encourage them. I, I, I also have a big problem with public transportation systems because they exist, but none of us seem to know that they exist. And I think that the communication with the students that their parking's going to be significantly cheaper if they just park on campus. And if they can park down on south campus and they can just use public transportation, it's going to be so much better. These kind of messages really need to be pushed significantly harder than they are. And if, if you're building and renovating, I'm, I'm so happy and so grateful that you're doing that. But I think that our community really needs you to sort of step up and really get the message that they're still students. They still need this. You're able to provide it for them. You have the open lots. We don't have open anything and we're, we're losing more and more. We're trying to put it in, but there's, we're, we're jammed. And we're going to jam in more beds into the super block, but that just means more cars and more people. I know technically it doesn't, but it does.
I appreciate the feedback and that's something that we'll, we'll ask you and Cole to address in the, in the planning process.
Mr. Osgood, has anybody discussed maybe just lowering enrollment by 100 or so students to resolve this issue that's going to be multifaceted, you know, involving multiple townships? Seems like an easy answer to right-size the number of incoming students with the number of available beds.
Mr. Travis, I don't, I don't think it's quite that easy. Actually, when, when students want to attend Westchester University and we're, we have a mission to serve the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I don't think turning away students is actually the answer. These are students who want to come to Westchester, who are looking for the promise of higher education. So I, I appreciate that that might be your perspective, but I, I, that's, that's not something that we're, we're.
So I'm in one of those jurisdictions within the southeast of Westchester. I am, you know, representing Ward Two and we have issues. We don't need any more issues. To Shield's point, we're already overburdened. Most of our problems go away in the summertime when the students are not around. We don't want any more housing on that side of the campus. Find another place. That would be my suggestion.
One, one small question. As I, I heard you say freshmen and sophomores, you asked them not to bring their cars on campus. If you assign a, a, to juniors and seniors that are going to live on campus, can you make it a requirement that when they rent at Commonwealth or they rent at Tyson or wherever, they have to accept a, if they're bringing in their car on campus, they have to accept an assigned parking lot? You said Matlock is 20% empty, you know, New Street's empty, has emptiness, so does Sharpless. So can you, is it a thought process that you say, look, you're going to rent something here? You could bring your car as a junior, but you also have to sign up for, let's check a box. You know, you got to go to Matlock Parking Garage and, and, you know, it's $30 a semester, which is not bad at all.
Mr. Phil, I think that's a great idea. We have, we have wide latitude to set our parking regulations. And if that, if we think that's something that will be beneficial to, to the convenience and, and the quality of life for, for the residents of the borough, we're, we're, we're open to have those discussions.
Yeah, that helps Chief Stevenson quite a bit because he needs to fill them parking lots. And it helps us and it helps Ms. Vaccaro because you're going to be building on Lawrence. You know, it's another skyscraper, you know, and we know that however many beds are there, if you designate that freshman, we know that they can't bring their cars. Or sophomore, they can't bring their cars in Lawrence, okay? But the other places, it, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a, a burden for $30 a semester to be designated, you're going to go to Matlock or you're going to go to Sharpless or New or whatever.
Yes, sir, I think we can absolutely take that back.
Thanks.
Any other comments from council?
Yeah, I have a couple of follow-ups here. Couple of years ago, you had students protesting and at least within, I think, this last past year. And a lot of them were rejected. It was described as a battle royal for student housing at Westchester University. How many students were rejected? For on-campus housing?
So at any given point, we had 800, so as I spoke earlier in, in my comments to the borough, we had 800 students on the waitlist. So I mean.
800, and, and how much is in a new dorm going to hold?
Some of the estimates I've seen are anywhere from 750 to 1,000, somewhere in that range.
And will that cover the amount of students that are going to be requesting student housing? If there's 800, there's probably another couple hundred, maybe, that just said, hey, we're not going to do it because it's worthless. So to me, you have a supply and demand problem here. You've got too much demand and not enough supply. So you're going to need, right? And that drives up rents for everybody else in the borough.
Well, the monopoly of the student rental permits contribute to that.
Well, in part, but when you have too many people coming in the borough that want to live in the borough from Westchester, that go to Westchester and they can't get student housing, then obviously they're going to jack up the rent because they could do, because it's a supply and demand problem. It's a simple economic issue here. So my problem is, my question is, why aren't you going to try to build maybe another dorm besides Lawrence?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, sir. I wasn't suggesting at all that, that, that there's only going to be one. I'm, I'm just trying to, to be as transparent with you about the level of confidence we have in the planning process up to this point. The plan is not complete yet.
So with the plan not being complete, that's why I want to send a lawyer there. Because there's too many questions that still need to be answered. There's too many, Brian, there's way too many. You, you live in, you live in my ward. You know, there's way too many questions that need to be answered by the university. Also, the university hasn't been, I'm not done yet, I'll let you go. The university hasn't been a very good partner with Westchester Borough. We have the existing lawsuit, the pending lawsuit regarding the stormwater fee, in which case the university sits at the base of the borough and benefits the most because that's where all the stormwater goes. We also have the issue with revitalization High Street. And we want to make that aesthetically better and safer. And the university hasn't yet contributed, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, to any type of, you know, any, any type of money towards those, that project. And so to me, it's like you're asking for a lot, but you're providing nothing. That's, that's where I'm at. And I think that's a frustration to people in the southeast, you know, and all over. I live in, we live in Ward Three, right? And so that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say here. So you, I mean, you all could use whatever words you want, but that's the reality of it.
Yeah, sure, sure.
How you doing? Zeb Davenport, Vice President, University Advancement, External Affairs. I've actually been working with Sean on the piece you talked about, about the High Street revitalization. We have had several conversations about how the university could work with the borough to make certain that we could make this whole corridor unify. In fact, the first conversation was, would you be willing to sign on so we can get a grant? Absolutely. The second piece was, what is it going to cost us to make the sidewalks uniform? Learned that any building that we have adjacent to the sidewalks would be our responsibility. So, but that's the far as the conversation went. So I just want you all to know that I, that's my area and I have been nothing but willing to have the conversation. Now, Sean, you're here, you can correct me if I'm wrong about that. So I wanted to address that.
And that, that's good. And I'm glad, and I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
But that needs to come to fruition.
I would just say this other piece to you real quickly. Just so you know, the residence halls that are going to be on north campus will be mainly for first year and second year students. So first year students will, are not allowed to bring their cars on campus. So that will not increase the cars on campus when we build that thousand beds. Then I will tell you, the other thing is, we don't have a parking problem. We have a walking problem. People want to park here and park there. So if you've got an issue, and this again is my area because I deal with the local municipalities. If there's concerns, we have a meeting that we meet pretty, twice a semester with the borough folks, the folks in West Ocean. And we invite folks to come so we can hear the issues, so that we can address them proactively and not in this kind of space. So we're willing to work with the borough because we understand that we're adjacent and we have to work together. So hearing some of these concerns, it would be great if we could hear them in those meetings because those are working meetings where we bring the issues up and try to address them straight ahead. The additional beds will help us to allow to, as Jeff has mentioned, to reduce the number of students who are going into the borough. We want to keep more students on campus. And because they're first and second year beds, it will not add to the cars on campus because we don't allow that.
And with that though, Mr. Travis made a good suggestion, in which case you could, you could halt enrollment. I mean, but you can do that. So to, to say you can't.
But part of it is this.
Because, because again, it goes to a supply and demand issue.
Right, but part of it is this, over the past few years, we have been decreasing our enrollment anyway. And the cliff is coming, so we're planning for that. He's in charge of making certain that the university stays sustainable. So in our plans, we have decided, and you correct me if I'm wrong, there is a decrease, a planned decrease in enrollment. That's why we're not going to increase the undergraduate population, which directly impacts the borough. Our undergraduate population has gone down and will remain stable. We're not planning to bring in more undergraduates to increase our undergraduate enrollment. If there's any increase, it's because of retention. So it's not a plan, we want to grow more. I just want to dispel that myth that we're not, it's not going to do us any good to grow more because we know that there's a cliff coming anyway.
What, what were the levels of the last couple of years?
Of decreases?
Yeah, so right now, you, you mentioned, it was earlier, it was like 14,500 undergrads are at Westchester, correct?
14,712 as I've seen in that 2021.
That was, that of what year?
Fall of 21.
Okay, what was it, 2022? Is it still the same? Is it still the same 2023, 2024?
It's much less. Currently I have, we were, I could, I could get it for you, but we're just, just shy 14,000, so we're not.
Okay, I mean, I would, I would like to see all those numbers. I'm a numbers guy.
I think we really need to see this comprehensive plan. I think that's what, a lot of what we're asking for answers to questions without any real facts or figures in front of us. And you're, you're asking us to make choices on faith and this discussion here, which is very difficult.
And, and I don't, I don't think that's what the university's asking. I think what the university is asking is for council to allow the university to implement its temporary housing so it can start its renovations for its students, for the existing housing. The master plan that you're talking about is a totally different process. In order to proceed with the master plan, which is for the whole campus, university has to follow the borough's ordinance and has to follow the township's ordinance. That requires the university to engage a consultant, which we told you is you and Cole, to do the master plan, to file a conditional use application for approval of the master plan in each municipality. The university has said that it expects to have the master plan by the end of this year to be able to share it with the borough, to be able to share it with the township. And then at that time, I have to file a conditional use application on behalf of my client in both municipalities, in the event that there's a project in those municipalities, which I'm sure there, there will be, I would expect in each. Certainly you're hearing in the borough, we'll have to, in order to proceed with the, even if it were a Lawrence Hall build of a new building there, we would have to get a conditional use approval from the borough. So we'd have to file an application, come to the borough, present all of the information that's required by the master plan ordinance, which includes parking analyses, traffic analyses, enrollment projections, all kinds of information that'll be submitted and reviewed in the context of a formal conditional use hearing. So that's, township has said the same thing that you're saying, Mr. Travis. We need the master plan. We need to know what the plans are. And our response to the township is the same to our response to the borough. The university has engaged you and Cole. They're actively working on that plan. I've been on several conference calls discussing that topic and their, their work that they're doing for the university. So that's coming. This is separate from that. This is, this is 128 beds on a parking lot on the campus where there's more than adequate parking. There's backup parking if it were ever needed so that the university can renovate existing beds for the, for the students who live on campus as part of the plan to get to the point where we have a master plan. They can build a new residence hall in the super block. That's, that's part of the master plan. This first step here, we're just asking council not to oppose the university's effort to renovate some of the existing housing in a, in an orderly way. And, and you've heard that they're not planning for enrollment growth. That's not what they want. And enrollment has gone down since, consistently since 2021. So what, what we're asking council is to not oppose the, the modular housing that we're putting in the parking lot in West Ocean. It's temporary. You've heard that it's a, it's five years. That's what's permitted by West Ocean's ordinance. And, and to say that, I've been serving in this role for the university probably for some 17, 18 years at this point. The relationship between the university and the borough has been very strong recently. And to say the university hasn't done anything, Mr. McGinnis, is just, it's just, it's simply not true.
Well, I mean, you got to look by your actions, by the actions.
Well, look at the, look at, look at the intersection of, of New and Rosedale. That's, that's, that's got plans to be renovated and, and completely redone. And the university agreed to take on the, the consulting fees and the costs of that project.
If we could, I'd like to, I'd like to stay on topic here. We, we've had a lot of conversations. You obviously understand there's a lot of frustration amongst council about the university. But we are here very specifically to talk about the motion to appoint conflict counsel. Would somebody, after we hear public comment, is there any public comment? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we appoint counsel to, to attend this meeting. I'll second.
We put this on consent? Okay, moving on to item number six, motion to approve settlement agreement and general release with Barry Properties, One West Gay LLC.
So this is an item related to an illicit discharge that was detected last year around the end of May and required weeks and weeks of investigation. Council met an executive session to discuss a settlement agreement to this matter. And that is the motion before you tonight, which is a legal matter. That's why we didn't post the attachment.
Counsel, any comments, questions?
No.
Care to make a motion?
Motion to move to consent?
And I'll second that.
Okay, moving on to item seven, discuss waiving a percentage of borough-related fees for the Budweiser Clydesdale event held on May 23, 2024.
Well, everyone's going tone deaf on this one. I brought, I, I brought the, the motion, the consideration up during smart growth because the, the Clydesdales, when they did come to the borough, it was not a sanctioned borough event, but it, it always turns into a borough event. Over 15,000 people showed up and stayed at our bars and restaurants and our shops from about three o'clock all the way about eight o'clock at night. And it was well-attended and the, the major cost of, of the, the, the event is basically police protection. And it came rolling in right around $6,800. And I asked that we, we give the, the downtown business district a, a percentage of a discount off the, the police protection because it did turn into a borough event.
You wanted to split that, right?
Yes, yeah.
I, I am, I sit on the bid and I am very much in support of this. I would like to see this taken further and the fee structure be reevaluated. But I think this is a good step for what has occurred in the past.
Additional comments, questions? I, I have one question. The, the actual cost versus what the fees are? Is that 50%, 75%? What is the actual labor expense cost?
We have a formula for figuring that out. So it, it's based on how many hours of officers and public works, employees and equipment that we need onsite. Typically, the biggest chunk of that are the police officers. I believe the number is 180 per hour. I believe the number is a hundred and eighty per hour for special events. Is that right, Keith?
One thing that the fee structure does charge for is, um, for cars being there. Now, the, the cars are not being paid. The people are, but the cars are not. But if there is a car in attendance, and there definitely were cars involved with this particular event, um, there's fees on top of the fees for the individual officers. I understand that the cost of the vehicles has to be covered at some point, but I don't know that burdening the bid, which is a, an entity that exists because we ask them to exist, because we as a community want these kinds of events, want this sort of things. I, I think charging for vehicles to attend parades and whatnot is a little overstep.
Is this something, then, that we may want to consider for future budgetary reasons, then?
Yes, please.
Then, you know, I'm, I'm okay, um, with, with what Ms. Vicaro said. And then maybe we could build that into the finance committee, uh, and looking at it for a budget for next year for special events and what they could cover. And whatever money is used, is used. Whatever money is not used goes back into the budget. Uh, that way, you know, we could at least have a, a, a pop-up event like this covered.
Yeah, I would agree with that. We've been talking about revisiting these fees for a couple of years now, at least since I've been on it because they seem, in some cases, to be cost prohibitive for, which is why we've lost a number of events. So if we could get the revisiting the fee structure on an agenda so that we can discuss, you know, what our true costs are.
Okay, so it sounds like.
Separate from revisiting. I, I would still like to see this move forward.
Agreed, but we'll, we'll put that on finance agenda for next month. Um, and is someone going to make a, want to make a motion?
Motion to put on consent?
To clarify, it's to reduce the, uh, bill by fifty percent for the services, which are sixty eight hundred dollars, more or less.
Correct.
Okay, put that on consent. Um, actually, public comment? None, okay. Moving on to the parking agenda. Number eight, motion to approve a one-year parking lease with Chestnut House, eleven West Chestnut Street, with the condition to transition new tenants to the Chestnut Street Garage. So that had a committee recommendation of two to one.
I, I do think we need to modify one word in there. From, it should say, uh, transition all tenants to the Chestnut Street Garage. So we're going to give them a year to move from Lot Ten to the Chestnut Street Garage. Any new tenants coming in will immediately go to Chestnut Street. So that was the discussion at the parking committee meeting. I just wanted to update the verbiage on here. Does anyone have questions?
Counsel, comments, questions?
I was the one person that was in opposition to this and have since had a conversation with Ramsey and Sean. And I agree, so it would be three zero.
Comment?
Did someone make a motion?
No.
Motion to move to consent?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Number ten, motion to award bid for wayfinding signage to Ford Sign Works LLC in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars.
Did, did you skip sec- nine? I, I think this is, is pretty clear. It's, it's going to be utilized, Lot Six is, it will be better utilized in Lot Six than where it is currently located. And we're trying to move towards a bunch of multi-space meters in our downtown area, so this is sort of a step one.
Okay, comments, questions? Public comments? We have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, move that to consent. Number ten, motion to award the bid for wayfinding signage to Ford Sign Works LLC in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Committee recommendation, three oh.
I'm very happy about this. It's below budget. So I, I will make the motion.
Any public comment? Okay, we have motion and a second, move to consent. Item eleven, motion to approve purchase of multi-space kiosks in the amount of one hundred and thirty one thousand, one hundred and ninety five dollars. Three oh recommendation.
So, uh, the committee did recommend that we go with. There's also an opportunity to pay for this that would also be costing two hundred dollars per kiosk. I wasn't moved until after the last meeting. So would not print a receipt. I wrote while I worked, sorry. Um, would not print a receipt, but I talked to the two boroughs that utilize paperless systems. Most people use the app. There's a problem like last one, just with the credit card number. Like we always do. What they do recommend that people just take it at the time. So I didn't know if strong feelings to your way of having a paper or no paper. I really don't.
Testing, testing.
Hello? Yes, okay.
Hello?
All right, my, my, my only, um, call out would be, and I talked. Electronic, I mean, there are. Coins or want to have paper or, you know, that don't want to use an app at the very least, right? Like, and so I just think we need to be a little bit cognizant of that as we're rolling this out, that we, we don't want to put our visitors and residents, whoever wants. In our borough. I mean, I, I think we've all had conversations, whether it's a vendor trying to put information into our systems or someone trying to get a parking permit or do, you know.
I have a little tech stat for all of these things. Right. Twenty years from now, I'm back in. But I think it's just something that we need to be considering when we're rolling this out. So my understanding is these kiosks, that piece of lobby, it's not like a whole town.
Yes, yes. No, we can still do it.
But to, to, to then go back and first say, oh, you got, you got to take a screenshot. Um, this. So I don't, I don't know. I don't want this. You get a few so that you can put in spaces where, you know, like maybe now my screen is, you know, I don't know if you did, but other areas, like something a little bit less. Okay, in fact, I will hope that's just, that's just my willingness.
Mine's fine. Um, where you, you have to put your license plate in? So, I mean, none of the other parking meters in town have paper receipts. You know, you just put in your credit card and/or license plate. So I'm fine going paperless.
I, I'd be concerned with having paper only because then we're going to have little receipts all over the streets. And we don't have paper receipts right now. I hear what you're saying completely, Nicole. The, the coin? I, I hear the, the technology jump is going to be, it's going to affect people. But I, I was just in Wildwood. It was all just apps. It was apps, just straight apps, not even kiosks. I, I, in Wayne, it's all kiosks. Like, it's, in Philadelphia, it's all kiosks. I think we're out of date at this point. And it's not, yes, Westchester residents are used to the coin-operated things. But I watch people want to use apps at our, at our meters. And it's weird because it's a meter and there's like little bits of information hidden somewhere on there and they're trying to read it. And kiosks will actually help more people than I think it will hurt.
I have one question about the paper option. You said it says savings of two hundred per kiosk?
And then we don't have to clean up after all the paper.
No, it's all. This is wild. Uh, no, it's all, um, by license plate. So it's really only for dispute purposes that we really utilize the paper. But again, we always go back into our system and check the last four digits of the credit card. So it's more of a security thing for people. Um, but I, I do hear what Nicole's saying, so I don't want to shock the system. But I do think if we're going coinless, it's not a huge leap to not have paper because like Mr. McCoy said, the meters don't have that now.
Any public comment? Someone like to make a motion, including the paperless or not?
I would like to make a motion that we go with this and it's paperless. Coinless and paperless.
Okay, we can move that to consent. Moving on to item number twelve. Motion to approve the extension of the dumpster permit at three eleven South Darlington Street. Three oh recommendation. Any public comment? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll move item twelve to the consent agenda. Item thirteen, motion to approve a budget modification in the amount of four thousand to participate in grant partnership with the TM ACC to upgrade bike lockers to electronic locks. Committee recommendation, three zero.
So the bike lockers that we currently have at Chestnut Street Garage, um, T, uh, Tim Phillips from T Mac told us that it would cost twenty six thousand dollars to upgrade from the manual locks to electronic. Uh, but they have a grant to cover everything but the four thousand dollar match. I was hoping that we could use some of the money that was saved from the wayfinding bid, but I'm also hopeful that we can partner with downtown Westchester to possibly get some sort of funding from a local business to wrap them and put a set, split the set and put a set at the Growers Market Lot so that, you know, people can bike into town and utilize those as well. So I think it would get the bike lockers used a lot more.
I love the idea of encouraging more bicyclists and have a place to put them.
I, I believe in, um, one of the community campus committee meetings, uh, the students were talking about how, you know, they would ride their bikes if there was a little bit easier egg, knowing where the, the racks are and having them cleared out. Sometimes there's bikes that linger. But also I think having some of these boxes around town might make it a little easier for them too, so that's nice.
And this is nice too because we can, it's, you can utilize an app so we don't have to handle the. So anyone can utilize them. You don't have to rent one anymore. You just pay and we can set the time parameters, which is nice as well.
Ramsey, another app.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make.
That was just procedural. Should this have gone through the finance committee first?
Needed the grant application approved first. Um, but it, and it came in right before parking committee. So yes, it should go and the budget modification will go to finance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any public comment? We have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
All right, we'll move that to consent. Item number fourteen, motion to approve special event application. Feast of the Assumption, St. Agnes, August eleventh, twenty twenty four. Three oh recommendation.
This is an event that happens annually. It's really just standard operating procedure, three oh. St. Agnes was following the proper protocol to get, get approval.
Counsel, comments, questions? Any public comment?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the special event application.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have consent. Okay, item, uh, smart growth fifteen, motion to direct the solicitor to prepare an amendment to chapter eleven, sorry, one twelve, six oh three, parking space requirements relative to Westchester Borough Planning Commission recommendations, three oh recommendation.
Okay, so this is take two. Last month, if you recall, the planning commission presented one spot per bedroom. And, um, that was a little too much for our blood. We were like, eh, a little too much. So they went back and they relooked at it and they have an updated proposal that, um, could we bring it up on the screen so that I, I have it kind of almost memorized? But, uh, it's like one point two spots for one bedroom. One, and, and studios, um, one point seven spots per two bedrooms and two point two spots. I think it's two point two spots per three bedrooms, somewhere around in there. But there it is. And then two, and then two point five spots. Go back a little bit to the, the last one, just real quick. And then two point five spots for every unit with four or more bedrooms. So takes it back a little bit. And then it says no stacked parking and then also, um, wants to have some guest parking available. But what this does, just to give you all some context. All right, now Bill, go to the other chart, please. Whoop, he's fixing stuff over there. Can you go back to that other chart now? Thank you, okay. So this, this is just to get a little more context so we understand what we're doing here. The, the goal is not to cripple developers. The goal is to right-size our parking because we swung the pendulum a little too far back in two thousand and twenty one when we went with the I T E study. Um, what we've been using, um, with I T E is like dense urban population with a lot of public transit and, and things like that, which, yeah, we're kind, we got a lot of people in this one point eight square miles, but unfortunately, we don't have the public transportation. We don't have the breadth of, um, work, like types of work. And we don't necessarily have the, like, the grocery stores and the things that you usually find in, like, a, a big city. So, um, what this, what this shows on this chart is that if you go back to two thousand and twelve, the places that we just, um, have been approving and also Chestnut Square is on here, you can see that Chestnut Square would have had four hundred and twelve spots. Um, Mitch's three hundred and sixty two, Burger King, two hundred and fifty six, and Rubenstein's four hundred and thirty eight. 362, Burger King 256, and Rubenstein's 438. If you go back to 2012 zoning, where we approved Chestnut Square, that landed Chestnut Square at 355. Any of the other buildings, if they would have come in under that zoning, would have had 302, 216, or 353. Yeah. You got, am I, okay. So, yeah, so the third line is showing where we've been approving buildings as of late, this 2021. So instead of 362 or 302, we approved 181 spots for Mitch's. We approved 144 spots for Burger King, roughly. There's still some conversations going on with Burger King. And then Rubenstein's 220. What this new proposal would do would give us, would be 248 spots. Not that we can go back and change Mitch's, but it would be 248 spots. It would be 179 spots for Burger King, and it would be 282 spots for Rubenstein's. What this does is get us mostly in line with the ITE general urban suburban, as opposed to the dense urban suburban kind of level there, and gets us to a 1.3, 1.4 ratio, 1.45 ratio, depending on how many one bedrooms or two bedrooms, versus what we've been approving, which has been like a 1.05 to 1.15 ratio. So we feel like this is a great way to kind of start to right-size us. Again, it's not about halting development. We want it to keep going. But the idea is to kind of get us to a space where there's more parking for the residents living in the building, which will allow for people to come visit us and park in the streets and all of those things. So that's where that goes. And we approved that 3-0.
Thank you for that explanation. Now, with, there's potentially two new buildings besides these two. Or these three that are named here.
These three have already been.
Correct.
Well, Burger King, again, they're, because they're changing their plan a little bit.
Right, but there's gonna be two new.
There might be some new ones coming.
Correct. So would the new standard be integrated into those two new building proposals moving forward?
They.
And Knox, because Knox is already under application.
Yeah.
But I don't know the third, second, oh, the second building you're talking about, of Rough Street.
Correct.
Except this one, because this payment is not going in yet.
Okay.
They submitted their documents.
Okay.
All law.
Okay, no, yeah, that was just my question.
Now, we could go back to Knox and say we're going in this direction and because the ordinance says you. Use dense urban, we want to use general suburb, urban suburban, the other, the other component. So, so we, you know.
But this proposal is, moving forward, is specifying a specific ratio as a.
Yes, yes. That's correct. That's correct.
No, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
I, I do just want to share that I did talk to the bid about this, and they were much more comfortable with this.
John, we're not trying to kill downtown Westchester, we promise. Wherever you are.
Additional comments or questions?
Thank everybody for, that has been involved in trying to figure this out, because I know there have been a lot of eyeballs and a lot of bodies and a confusion. So this has been very helpful to help clean up a lot of it.
Planning Commission's been great, really.
Do we have public comment first?
I'll second that. All right, I can second that. All right.
All right, sounds like we can move that to consent.
All right, motion to direct the solicitor to draft an amendment to Chapter 112 zoning short-term rental ordinance and schedule a public hearing for August 21, 2024. So we've received the ordinance in our inboxes. The Smart Growth reviewed this last week. There were a couple of minor adjustments that we made. But one of the big conversations that we had here, I mean, this, this ordinance is for Town Center, which is what we had talked about last month, and we all came together on Town Center. The, the one thing that came up during Smart Growth was the 500 feet distance. Was that enough, actually, was the conversation. And so Nick did some additional analysis. If, if the separation is 500 feet, in, there'd be approximately, what, like 40-ish units could potentially end up in Town Center. If there was 1,000 feet, remind me, how, about how many was it for Town Center with 1,000 feet separation? Did we? Can you bring the map up then at this point?
One question about the, I mean, I think the 500 was equivalent to like one per block, which seems reasonable. The other piece was if there were multifamily residences of four or more, you could not have one of those units as a short-term rental.
Correct.
I just, since I wasn't part of the conversation, I was just wondering if, how do we come up with four unit multifamily? Just, just for clarification. Like, why, why is it four, not six or eight? Or, do we know? And is it redundant if we're already limiting one per 500? Because I think what we wanted is not having an apartment full of Airbnbs, right? But if we already have a radius that could be vertical or horizontal, I guess, is it redundant?
I don't specifically remember. I knew we were trying to avoid the apartment buildings, you know, the Chestnut Squares, et cetera, from, from that happening. But I don't remember where we came up with the, the four unit.
I, I'm not involved at all. But, you know, four, a four unit, above a four unit is a commercial building and below is not, even though that doesn't make any sense. Like, it's just a line that is something in rental properties. I'm not saying it makes any sense. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
If it doesn't make sense, can we strike it?
Do, do we need to strike it? Or do we just leave it there? I mean, are you concerned that there are people out there with a?
Why I'm asking is, I have a very nice house that has six units across the street from me, multimillion-dollar renovation. One of them is an Airbnb. It's six units total. So according to the way that the language is written, it would not qualify because it's six versus four.
Is it in Town Center?
No, but I think if we, this is still a phase in approach, right? We're still testing this out. So if we have language in there that's restricting a six multifamily unit building, maybe it's commercial, and we have the 500 radius, 500-foot radius, is it, is it redundant and is it restrictive?
I would want some language in there that we don't want Airbnbs in the really large apartment buildings. And I don't even know why, but I just, I feel like they shouldn't be in there. I am okay with that six unit. I'm okay with the Airbnbs overall. So, but I, I do think it's arbitrary. Personally, I think the four unit line is arbitrary. So I don't know why we can't up it to six, but it would still be arbitrary. I don't know.
I didn't know why it was there, so that's why I'm asking the question.
I, I would agree that it seems a bit redundant, Brian. And I would be okay with striking it once we have counsel's recommendation or explanation, one of the, one of the two. It makes, I didn't understand where that came from. I didn't remember discussing it previously. It just sort of showed up in the ordinance. So there must, it must be coming from somewhere. Right, right. But how do we land, to Mr. Travis's point, how do we land on four, not eight or 10?
Well, this is, this would be a motion to draft the amendment and to schedule a public hearing. So I guess the question, if we have to go back to the solicitor, I don't recall if she put that in there. I'm not sure that we asked for it specifically.
Pieces? I'm not a patient man, sorry. The solicitor had conversations via email with members of council to kind of put something together that had, that expressed the desire of the majority of council, something that the council could get behind and vote for. So I think it came up in some conversation with one member or other members of council, the standard. It sounds like we need some clarification. May I suggest we move it for discussion tomorrow? We can have the solicitor attend. Michael Gill, we can iron this out and get it, get it taken care of.
Okay.
You want to take any public comment on this item while, or offer that?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to take any public comment on this, Mr. President?
Any public comment? You may.
John Carnes, John Carnes, I'm an attorney in Chester County, and I'm here on behalf of my client who owns 26 South Warren, what is it? Excuse me. I don't know the property as well as I should. West Union Street. And her property, her property is in the town commercial district. And she's had a long-going zoning matter that goes back to 2022 with Kevin Gore. And it's been on hold with the general understanding that this was going to be worked out in a zoning ordinance amendment. That was her understanding as presented to me. I don't know all the facts, and I'm coming in this kind of late. But in any event, she has a four unit or five unit, because to address the, Mr. Travis's position, it's a beautiful home that has four units in it, but there's a, there's a grand, there's a, an in-law suite involved as well. So technically, it would be five and it would be over, theoretically could be over. It's, it's not certain. But this would put her out of business, and she has the desire to operate a Airbnb at that facility. And so I'm just commenting on that. The, the version that she presented to me that was proposed initially in 2023 was very broad. It just allowed it within the zoning district and others as well. Now all the residential districts have been stricken, and these additional provisions are put in here. So she would be concerned about the requirement that the multifamily dwelling apartments listed to not more than four dwelling units, because that would put her out. And I think that it is a kind of an arbitrary decision. It is a Town Center. This is a beautiful building that she has, and she, I don't think should be precluded from having an Airbnb. And the 500 feet, I don't know how that affects her. Hopefully, it doesn't, because she has a kind of an almost grandfather position. We don't know where that zoning hearing board's decision's going to go, or what's happening there. But I would urge that it be amended to allow her to continue her use with some consideration given to that. I know you can't create special legislation for special people, but overall, I think the general gist of it was initially, let's allow Airbnbs here. And she has a property that has been used for that purpose, and she'd like to continue. So I think the suggestion of removing that restriction, excuse me, on four and less being permitted, should, I don't know what's going on, I've got a throat problem here, should be permitted to continue. So that's, that's my position. In terms of the ordinance, it seems as though it was drafted with the idea that something further would be put together before an August date. I know this is on your action item tomorrow, and I, I gather that you want to have some better understanding of what it is. So if necessary, we'll be back tomorrow, if we can make it, just to kind of present that position. But hopefully, you'll take it under consideration in your deliberations and in your communications with your solicitor. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
So just, just to make sure I understand, are all five units of that building used as Airbnbs?
I, the, I don't know the specifics. Some of them are, I believe.
No. How, how many of them are? I'm just curious because of all the conversation that we're having. Okay. Thank you. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, you gotta come up. Sorry, we gotta put you at the, say that again.
On August 17 of 2021, and I had an email correspondence with my appraiser informing Mr. Kevin Beans and Mr. Kevin Gore that the property is being used as an Airbnb. And I continued that use when I purchased the property to supplement my living expenses, as this is a very expensive area. And as a physician, I cannot afford to pay my mortgage without the supplemental income from my long-term tenants. I have two apartments rented on a month-to-month leases, and I put two dwelling units on Airbnb. And I got a violation that I don't believe anyone else has gotten, even though we know that there are other existing Airbnbs.
We did put it on, I'm only speaking loud because I don't have a microphone, I don't want that thing, Mick Jagger. The, we did put it on a stay for a long.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. But no one else got a violation.
I hear, because we didn't know for two years what we were doing with this short-term rental thing, because there was a lot of discussion on how we should do it and why we should do it. Now, as we're getting to the finish line, Mr. Travis has brought up the, the four unit building, which.
I see.
I really don't remember where that came from, but it's there.
Well, I know that in 2019, three other violations were sent out.
Okay, so we'll get a clarification from our solicitor tomorrow on that.
Okay.
And the only thing that we got to figure out is how close we want each Airbnb, whether we want it 500 feet, 1,000 feet. Because we, if we go 500 feet, there'll be 40 of them, and it'll be called, you know, a short-term rental district by itself, it's at the Town Center. So that's what's going to be in that district there, along with two hotels. So tomorrow, we should.
Three hotels, right? There's two in construction?
Just one.
Just one? Okay.
Just one. The, we have.
And then the apartment building on.
Right.
With retail space right around the corner from.
That should be a hotel so big. But, but anyway, the, we have to figure out how close we want them, because we don't want them stepping on each other. And 500 feet is, you know, if we said one a block, well, it depends how long the block is, you know. So that's what we'll decide tomorrow night with, with the solicitor on that fourth thing, Mr. Travis.
I would appreciate if all the council members would be informed about the two-year ordeal that's been going on with the violation sent to me on August 18, 2022. I've had a lot of back and forth with the solicitor and council members regarding the violation that was sent specifically to me and no one else. So I would, I would appreciate that. And then the standstill agreement that we reached in, I think it was August of 2023.
That's still in place.
April, yes.
We're just here primarily, I mean, the focus here is on the zoning amendment, and we don't want to be zoned out. That's basically, I think everybody understands.
Yeah, like, as Mr. Travis said, we don't know where the four units came from. We'll have a clarification on that. And then the distance. And then, then we should have a clean ordinance at that point.
I hope so, I hope so, because, because the wording feels very specific, as well as the violation feels very specific to me.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving that to discussion for tomorrow.
All right.
Item number 17, approved May 2024, Harb submission recommendations. A through G, anything specific?
No, everything was approved by Harb, so.
We have a motion? Okay, move that to consent. Finance and Revenue Committee, number 18, purchasing approval.
Yes, these are just standard purchasing approvals that were all approved with myself and Miss Shimonie. Items one through eight.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
We'll move that to consent. Number 19, motion to schedule a hearing to adopt the Administrative Code, Chapter 3-25, Administrative Purchasing System Updates, July 17, 2024.
Essentially, what this is, it's indexing the purchasing to the Pennsylvania standards.
Comments or questions? Public comment? We have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, second? I will second that.
Thank you. Move that to consent. Item 20, approved grant resolution for CFA flood mitigation grant program for Westchester Stormwater Repair Project.
Basically, what this does is it authorizes the borough manager and the president to apply for the grant.
Comments or questions?
My, my biggest comment, I think we approved this, is this the one, though, when we apply, or is, Don, is this the one when we're applying, though? It shows six at Lacy and Matlack. It doesn't, this one does or it does not show? We, long story short, we do not want six bump outs at Lacy and Matlack. Put it on the record. Put it in the minutes, Dana.
This is a separate one, this, a different one.
Okay.
This is the lining of the brick storm sewers that we've been working on, so, the, I think yours is, it's separate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment? We have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll move that to consent agenda. Item 21, motion to approve the request from the wastewater department to sell the 2010 F-350 pickup truck on Munisabid.
Just standard to have them sell a pickup truck.
Motion to consent? Oh, wait.
Questions? Any public comment?
All right, now vote, now I can do it. Okay, sorry, backwards world tonight.
I'll second.
Okay, move that to consent. Item 22, motion to approve verification list of qualifying volunteers eligible for property tax credit.
Right, so this is a total of 12 volunteers to approve the credit for, for this past year.
Comments or questions? Public comment? Okay.
Motion to put on consent?
I will second.
Thank you. Move that to consent. Finally, 23, other business, approved the May 14 and 15 Borough Council Meeting Minutes.
Motion, oh, no comment from me here.
No changes?
Motion to put on consent?
And I will second.
Okay, thank you. Move that to consent, and we will adjourn this meeting at 8:05. Thank you very much.